Yes, this is John Wilson from All Points TV and today we have the distinct pleasure to be able to sit down and talk with Dr. Joyce Ellis McNeil. She's one of the candidates running for the 8th Ward City Council seat in Flint, Michigan, in the August primary, August 8th. And welcome to All Points TV. Can you hear me?
Oh yes, yes, thank you, John.
So anyway, yeah, there's several candidates running for these. Like, I don't think there's any council seat that's currently occupied that's not being challenged. So, I mean, who is the current person you're challenging, gonna be challenging for the seat?
Uh, Vika Dan-Varen.
Okay. And, uh, anyway, we'll go into your background here. Um, okay, we got a little information here. She gives a lot of good information on her cards here, by the way, by herself. She's owner of Brown 2 Education and Resource Center. She's instructor for Flint Community Schools. A Central Michigan University graduate. She has a, holds a Masters of Public Administration, NASPAA. A Bachelor of Science in Business Administration, organizational, organization management. A PhD in Theology, Bethlehem Ministry, Oral and W术 University. An Associate Computer Information System, Lewis College of Business. Wow, you've got quite a varied background, saying that.
Oh yes, I love school, I love learning.
So now, are you a lifelong resident of Flint?
No, I've been in Flint about sixteen or seventeen years.
And where was your original home?
Um, Detroit, Michigan.
Okay, so...
Down in Taylor, or we said Detroit, but I'm from Taylor as well.
Very kind of like, blue collar background here, it's like we have here in Flint, so I mean...
Yes.
Yeah. Taylor's like, it's like I've been there a few times and it's, this is kinda, it's a little bit, actually, it's nicer in some ways in Flint because it's, it's got more businesses kind of thriving in, but it's not so much the same background.
Yeah, and I kinda worked at, um, General Motors at the GM Design Center when I decided to take a career opportunity and changed to which way I wanted my career to go.
Yeah, so I mean, I think a lot of people did that, and I think that's a good thing to do, because I mean, the factories had some limitations, and they also, it's probably, a lot of people just find it distasteful to work there for thirty years and now they want to find something else, they want to branch out, and GM did encourage that for a long time, so...
Oh yeah, and, so, um, I didn't really work in the factory, I have to make sure I'm clear that my husband is a GM retired factory worker. I worked at the GM Design Center, over in the Tech Center.
So that's like, you're an engineerian position?
Yeah, management, yes.
Alright, well anyway, that's kind of your background, so I mean, plus you've, you're in and around the Detroit area, which has got many of the same issues and concerns that Flint has, that parallel to each other, and with the water crisis, our two cities are kinda intertwined with the city of Detroit. Um, anyway, what would you say, you know, like I would always tell the candidates, to use the euphemism, Flint, you know, faces a lot of challenges, which is, you know, it's obstacles, there's a lot of bad things going on in Flint. What would you think, um, you as a councilperson, would address first?
Well, one of the, first thing I want to address is, we have to move on past the water crisis, the Flint water crisis, into more of a community resilient, looking at how we move from a crisis into community resilient, how do we utilize these resources and make Flint a better place to live? As well as using Flint as a research summit, where people can come and learn how we overcome all of these elements that was against us. So, um, that's my goal as a counselor, is to rebuild Flint in a better way, to make people feel comfortable, as well as making it one of the best learning cities in the United States, because this is probably one of the worst disaster, but it doesn't have to stay there. If we know how to use our resources and our head, we can make this a great comeback story.
Well, I assume there's promise, and a lot of people hold that all too, you know, having Michigan State University come on board here with their, you know, medical campus right here in the downtown area, as well as the University of Michigan. Two noted rivals, basically within, you know, speaking distance of each other, if you will. Um, so I mean, it's like, that's kind of encouraging, plus you have Cudley, which is a top-notch engineering school in the United States.
Yes.
Um, so I mean, there's something to build on, but I mean, that kind of process, I would say, and I think some of the other people would also agree, that it would take a long time for that to develop, you know, to actually flesh out, to actually come to the community, and actually have an impact on the community. What would you, as a city councilperson, would you try to do to encourage maybe the colleges staying here? How, how do you think you could do that?
Well, um, we have to look at where we at, and we have to really show the success story. We have a whole lot of millennials that have came out of college and stayed right here in Flint, utilizing their skills from anywhere from social justice to entrepreneurship. Um, what I really would like to sell with Flint is that there's a lot of opportunities here, there's a lot of entrepreneurial opportunities here. And, um, but like I said, we have to resolve one of the biggest issues, to convince people that you can stay here, and you can have a really good community here. So that is what I would like for people to see, as a city councilperson. What I also would like to do is be able to, uh, use my leadership skills and collaboration. How do we collaborate with these different entities, where we can come better? I, I do a lot of research and look, and I use Austin, Texas as my model, and I use Frandell and Rochester's, and if you knew those cities prior to where they at now, you can see how they became a very good comeback story. Also, I would like to work more closely with Detroit, because Detroit is a very good comeback story, I raised in Detroit. So, um, utilizing this and changing the, moving the community from being traumatized and angry into being more resilient, and how can we make this a better place for our children?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it's like, and do you have children currently living here with you, or...
Well, one of the reasons I run is my son died in a water crisis from the bacteria. He had a compromised immune system, and the bacterial level was too high for him to survive. And during his exit and transition, I had to do the, uh, had to do the, what you call the hospit with him, and I promised him that, and I promised the community that nobody should have to put this kid to sleep, and that I would fight for clean water, I would fight for water rights, or I would like to see the community have more say in the decision-making process of our water. So, um, I have one daughter left, and I have about three grandsons, three grandkids, and I'm now raising my son's kid, so, um, that is my passion for running. I promise him if I, if I, he helped, if he let me help him get through this process, that I would make an honest change.
Well, first off, let me express my condolences for you losing your son, and I guess that would, I don't, I think most people would want to be, that compelled most people to become active in a, you know, struggle or situation to...
Yes, yeah.
...better the situation. So that's the tragic sense of, well, tragic loss there, I mean, I am sorry to hear that. Um, no, it's like, the water crisis is just one of the things, I mean, but it's like, how do you see this, this to have and develop? Do you, do you see, do you buy, do you think it was just a handful of individuals, or do you see it being something that crept up and a series of bad decisions got us to this point, or...
It was really a bad decision. This is nothing that, what they just jumped up and did. KW and Great Lake Water has been in place for a very long time. The conversation about Flint Water has been a conversation a very long time. But when water become a commodity, just like oil, then that's when greed and corruption comes in, and it can come in from all levels. And as you can see what that result was from the decision-making process. So, I believe that it was at all level. It was a horrible experience. One of the things as a public administrator that we learned from this is that we as citizens, we have not paid attention to those things that are necessary for life, and we have given those over to entities. We have to create some type of board or director where we have an oversee over these things. We can't undo yesterday. I can't bring my son back. I teach in this school, I can't change the behavior of the kids. I, I see what I see and I know what I know. So, it's a lot of damage has been done to the whole community. But my goal and my passion is how do, I want to work with the healing process and nurture this city back, hold again. And I think we can do it, but it's gonna have to start with each individual looking at themselves, which direction do I want to go? Do I want to stay in the dark? Or do I want to leave my kids' kids and inherit, and that we fought a good fight, and we turned it around, and we made it a better place? That is where my focus at is, the generation behind me, and I don't want to leave here saying I closed my hand and left here being angry, and not leaving here, leaving a positive impact on this city.
Well, that's a mad thing, that's very, that's very, like a testimony to your strength of character, because I mean, you, you don't seem to be as, as a lot of people, if this happened, it would be very bitter, and I don't, I, I get your, I get your, you know, the sense that this tragedy has really affected you, obviously, but I, I don't draw, you know, I don't get from you this bitterness that a lot of people would have, and I find that commendable. Um, yeah, Flint is like, there's so many levels, and I mean, there's so many things that already were wrong with Flint...
Yes.
...before this happened. And, uh, like we were talking earlier, just before we started doing this interview, or recording it, um, I said that there's a lot of, you know, I think this is true too, I mean, it's, you know, there's, there's gotta be focus on it, but a lot of times, people like have a tendency to pick, uh, kick, you know, you know, shoot the wounded, you know, and they're like now in the press and in the media, where Flint's become like a butt of the jokes, you know?
Yes.
Like Steve Harvey and stuff like, which I don't really think you give it all that much by, I think it was trash talking to some other guy, but I still think it was unfortunate he said it, I don't think he should have his career destroyed over it.
Right.
People, people deal tragedies in a different way now. You can't sit there and make a comment about, you know, you can't say they're, destroy them as a person because he made an offhand comment, because people don't want to look at the horrors of existence, and they kind of have a psychological barrier. And the humor is often poorly used in that attempt, so I mean, I really, but I mean, it's just basically, influence, this gets worse for Flint in the public eye, or the larger context, the larger world. Um, how do you think that could actually be addressed? Do you think that there'd be some kind of campaign, or just simply changing direction, actually making it, the waters are secure and safe? How do you feel that could be turned around?
The way I would like to turn it around is, take that frown and turn it upside down for the generation behind you. Um, the generation behind us don't really understand your bitterness and your angerness, and it's okay to make a joke about the water. It's okay, uh, to smile sometime when I really take a shower, so let him go take me and get in this dirty water, let me go pay this dirty water bill, and I make comments about it, because what it does is encourage me to, to be positive. You know, I could say, oh, I'm not gonna pay this dirty, and I go, well, I'm not gonna pay this dirty water bill today, or, you know, let me water my plant, and, um, that's how you get un-traumatized. Uh, I know we are traumatized about this water, but you got, at some point, we got to get winged, we have to become winged away from this. And, and the way we do that is, we learn to embrace and love each other, we learn to forgive each other. Um, I get a lot of heat, you know, I don't, I love Dave Wallin, I love Woodrow Stanley, we are human agents, built to choose right and wrong, and we don't do it well all the time, but the good thing about it, if you learn from those mistakes, and you can come back to the table. I don't like, if we keep pushing those people back that was at the table when the problems start, it's gonna take us longer to solve the problem. I would like to see the day when those people that was at the table, that created this, come back and help us solve the problem, because you have the answer, you have the inside information. And when people see us talking and not being bitter, then it makes the environment safe. Um, and people are not aware of it, but our children is very sensitive of what's going on.
Yeah, I would definitely, I wouldn't even know how to handle as a parent, see if I had a child who's like elementary school age, and that's another thing, is like, being a parent in Flint, where do you send your kids to school at? I mean, I know there's charter schools, but I mean, that's another issue, but when you look at the water condition, the situation, and the kids are gonna watch TV, they're gonna hear the coverage, they might get on Google and check all, you know, type in the chemicals they say has been, this water's been treated with, and the issues, and to find that out themselves, they're, I mean, it's a good thing in a way, it's a learning experience, but sadly, they shouldn't be exposed at such an early age, it should be something that they're, you know, they shouldn't have to deal with it, nobody should have to deal with this. I don't really think nobody should have to deal with this kind of situation. I think it, I think there were serious, serious missteps, and I definitely would like to see the people who are accountable, if they were callous about it, and if they were, you know, disregarded warnings and stuff like that, to be faced punishment. Well, how do you feel about that?
Well, I think there should be some type of punishment for what you have done. Uh, I think that most of the angry in people right now, that what I'm hearing, is that they don't see that punitive damage, punitive damage, seeing as, well, healing wounds into a city that was already broken, already torn apart, already beneath the table, was eating from, eating crumbs from the table anyway, then you come along and you add it just on to the trauma that they was already in. So, I believe that, but going beyond that, okay, we get beyond that, we get to, what we're looking for, is you wanna call it punishment. Is it really punishment when you turn around and you have all of this anger and stuff left inside of you? I work in the, I turned my life around, decided to go to the school system and, and teaching the school, and teach kids, and, um, in the inner-city school. I understand culture, I understand when the child has a parental problem, a bad behavior problem, then I also understand when the child is getting ready to have a psychological problem with me, and they're getting ready to shut down with me. So, I'm able to take children and bring them from a 1.5 reading level to a 5th grade reading level. I had a classroom where 4th graders are still in the 12th grade and can't, cannot read and write, and it was simple arithmetic. Um, I see the kids are traumatized, if I wash my hands in the water, if they think I'm gonna turn the water fountain on. So, what we have to start to doing is preparing the children that things are gonna get better. I'm praying that in September, that you do not expect for those children to come into the classroom and turn on a water fountain that has not been turned on in about two years, without some type of pre-assistant coaching. So our children are gonna have to be coached back into having a relationship with water, and that's where I'm at now. How do we rebuild that relationship with water, where we trust it, you know, we trust it, so we didn't ever have to think about it, it was just there, no matter where we went, we had access to water. So we got to build that relationship of trust in the water, even if the water is good. What we also have to do is just get the truth. We have three data out there, and they all say in a different thing. So we got to get to the point of telling the truth. If we can tell the truth, then we have something to work with. Me, myself, I'm still traumatized. Um, I don't believe that I could mentally, uh, drink the water right now, eventually I'm gonna have to, just for me to be healed. So, I go beyond punishment, the law does what the law does, the court does what the court does, but what do you do after that?
Yeah, and that's, that's remain to be seen, I think a lot of this kind of people have different perceptions, different, different, you know, prescriptions for what they think is the cure, uh, different ideas, coping mechanisms, I guess you would call it, so I mean, that, um, it is, I mean, it is, it's something that very few communities in the United States in the 21st century had of, and actually now, tragically, we are finding that more communities are affected by, you know, the exposure to lead in the water, and with a much higher levels than we have gone through, and, um, it just basically makes you wonder why this is happening, why this is being accepted, and why, who covered it up, because it's, it just didn't happen overnight.
No, when you talk about a man-made disaster versus, uh, the disaster where the infrastructure just, you know, just went chaos and it could not provide this service, but when we're talking about a worldwide man-made disaster by a decision-making process, it paints a totally different picture. Then the media really didn't help when they came in, and because they was trying, people don't understand media in the midst of your crisis. The media is only here to tell a story, and some people are gonna benefit from that story, but the media did not come to solve a problem. They brought a lot of attention here to Flint, but when they left, it left us, the same poison water that brought the whole world together here in Flint, the same poison water has divided us. We can't even have a civil meeting. Uh, that's one of the reasons I want to run for city council, and I hope the other council people that are running, that you examine yourself. You're really gonna have to have strong public administration skills, you're really gonna have to understand what ethics there are, you got to be able to embrace all people, all the versatile people, you got to watch your language. And when we can come together under those different terms, not just regular person that's coming in off the street and you're mad, and you got these great ideals. We all got great ideals, but we have to pick at them until we get a solution, but if you don't have common public administration skills, you don't understand that the budget is what drives the city, and you have to understand that the water fund was driving most of your major city. We got to get past that, we got to fix that. The water fund should not be the driving force in your budget, that guides the city. That's not the way things come in, use your property taxes, your business, and your jobs. So, if we can understand to look at that budget and find out what is driving this budget, what is driving us? If you find out that it's the necessary things of life that is causing the budget to be valid, then we gonna have to reexamine ourselves, because next time, next thing you're gonna be thinking about is greed, that's how greed gets in. So, I would like to see that water fund in a different part of the budget, it stays there, that's our protection, and we can maintain the plant, hire people, whatever. So, that's my thinking of how I would like to see things done, but we have to have the right people that been through a lot and understand business. One thing I understand about government, and I have to say this, is that when the government comes in, a lot of time we do things because we think that we have to do it. I remember how my government came in on my first business, and they was tearing up my daycare center, my workers was all chaotic, and they saying, when they got through, well, oh fourteen years, you would come up with almost $400,000. In the midst of all of this chaos, I'm trying to save my employees, I'm trying to save the job, I'm trying to save my son, so, here, give me this piece of paper and let me sign it, and just get the heck going away from me. I found out I learned something from that, because I signed my life away, I lost my business with that. I understand government overreach, I understand that when they come with you with something, be careful, analyze this. You don't have to give an answer right away, you don't have to just jump, jump, jump. So we have to really start to think in very cautious in our decision-making process the way that we want things to go. Most of the things that I found out talking to my citizen, and I listened, when I said, I'm listening, I'm listening for what I don't hear, I don't listen for what I do hear, because it's what you don't hear is the answer to your problem.
See, you brought two interesting points, and the last one being a very relevant one to what's that, you gotta look beyond what you're hearing. Another one is too, that's the government overreach, I mean, you are intimidated, and see, that's the thing, is a lot of times people experiencing this kind of situation we went through, and you've also personally suffered that, you know, the loss of your son because of the contaminated water. Um, they would have a tendency to want to be, the knee-jerk reaction would be to want to implement more draconian or more severe laws, and try to go after the people, and I think it sounds like that's your, your experience, what you had to deal with yourself, it's kind of tempered your response to that, because I mean, a lot of times, you want to get the wrong, you want to get the people responsible, and you also want to make it a fitting, you know, the crime, punishment fits the crime. And, um, I think you, that, that's experience, what you experienced with that personal business of yours, um, with the government overreach is probably something good for a person who is going into politics.
Yeah.
Should have, because a lot of times the idea is like, oh, just pass more laws, or we'll come down harder on them, or we'll make them pay, and that's certainly not, often not the approach. You know, and sometimes it's like, it's like killing a spider with an axe, I mean, it's an overkill, you know, overreach, overkill, so. I think that, that's, I think, you know, as sad as that was, and before I'm hearing it, sounded like a very bad, unpleasant situation for you, it was something that very few people going into politics seem to be, actually have experienced something similar, and I wish they would have experienced that.
Oh yes, because once you do that, I was more focused on what went wrong than focus on what I learned from it. It took me a while to regroup, because my whole career was wiped away, my business was wiped away, I lost my son, you know, within a year, my homeowners insurance, or my bathroom was corroded, and so the shower collapsed with my grandson in, and my insurance came out, I canceled my policy, pre-existing condition, and in the midst of all of that, I looked for how I could make it better, how I could, you know, how I'm gonna get through this, you know, and so you don't, a lot of times you don't have time to be angry, because when you're angry, you're not thinking. So you have to sit down and be quiet, and just take one step at a time. Uh, one of the things I ask the citizens of Flint, I'm just not running for just the 8 Ward, I'm running for the citizens of Flint. I don't just teach in the 8 Ward, I teach all over, so the whole city is my passion. And sometimes it's those little things that makes us great. And we got to start all over, I'm just not happy with our current council, because we are on the spotlight, the world is watching us, they're seeing how you utilize the money that they sent you, they're seeing how we handle our business. You cannot expect to go to the government anywhere when you can't be trusted with the little things they've given us. So we got to show them that we know how to come together, we know how to sit down in a meeting and be civil. We're gonna have investors coming to our friend, I see that, I see people coming to Flint, it's a good opportunity here. Um, one of the problems that we have to really be sensitive when this started to happen is that make sure the little people have a stakeholder interest in rebuilding and revitalizing the Flint. We got to figure out how we can, how the minority are to be a participant in the stakeholders, or helping them stay on their feet, being an advocate. One of my passions is that I would advocate for mothers that want to open up a daycare, or open up a small school. I would be that advocate for you, because I understand the government, I understand you don't have to sign off on every piece of document they give you, you don't have to accept those different licensing charges against you. So, that's what we have to do, we have to be sensitive to everybody, you have to be very inclusive to make sure that those that want to participate and wants to rebuild the city has an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, so I think you struck about some very good issues there, I mean, some of its concerns would be, because you know, you're saying about government overreach, and then how that probably would be a discouragement, like zoning ordinances, for example, I have a friend that's always bringing that up, about how that's kind of dampened the entrepreneurial spirit here in Flint, because they'll just arbitrarily enforce, I mean, allow this to happen, and that somebody else tried that in another area even, or something like that, they seem to go after that one, the newer, the newcomer, and whether they promote it before, or there's a very selective enforcement, or some just inane laws, some just dumb, out and out stupid laws...
Yes.
...that you're pulling out, so...
And we have to look at that. I worked on the Flint Master Plan and Economic Development, and also, I understand revitalizeation, sustainability, and green space. People don't understand, they get paranoid about green space, but green space, you're gonna have a green space next door to you, then a house burned down, where people can commit all kind of crime. The green space makes the property value go up a little better, it makes the whole community look better. Um, I understand anytime what has revitalizeation and sustainability, there's always the risk of gentrification, and it's always there. And that's an issue that we have to really deal with, is that gentrification, that's some of the problems that, um, when people feel like they've been pushed out and they're like, we got to do a better job in making sure that we don't create a gentrification, but we also have to understand placemaking, that the generation that's coming in behind us, they don't want the big house that they got, they want space, they want green space, they want bike path, they want healthier stuff, healthier living. So, as a city official, we have to create that environment that attracts those youth into building our community. It is the youth that's gonna make Flint great again, it's the millennials that's gonna make Flint great again, it's those are the people that walk up and down the street and increase business sales. So we have to learn how to give those millennials that space where they can grow. But the problem with Flint is the spirit of ageism, and because we done went through so much and lost so much, the senior citizen find themselves needing a way to regroup, and they can't regroup because revitalizeation and sustainability, since you're 45 or 50 years old, there's no place for you in the job market. So I have created a program in that, I will introduce in the future.
I will introduce in the future-
...that will help senior citizens not be competitive with the career, millennials are supposed to go to work.
Baby boomers, we saw a problem, that's some of the programs that I'm looking at doing.
Seems like you thought about a lot of things, you have a lot of things that you-
Going on in your head there that I'm like-
It's got to be addressed, it's got to be addressed, and I don't think that a lot of people who run for office consider those issues. But anyway, I'd like to wrap this up today, and you have, you got your yard sign up here, and also encourage you, would you have any numbers, you want to give all phone numbers to people to contact you?
Oh yes, I'm going to have a meet at the White Horse Tavern Thursday, it's a fundraiser, ask them for $25 donation if you have it, you can come in, you can speak with me, you can talk to me.
I do speak and engagement, I'm a motivated speaker, I'm always talking about changes and conditions.
My number is 810-820-5635. Once again, that number is 810-820-5635.
Okay, and thank you very much for your time today, and you also have another event going to be going soon today too, as well, right?
Yes, we will be at the Flint May Library, the candidates is running from Ward 7, 8, 9, we're going to have a public forum, the community is invited to come out, it's going to be the narrator, moderator, it's going to be from 5 to 6. They will be asked, putting the questions together, the audience can ask us questions, so I think it's going to be a great opportunity to see who you select, because you have from a just election, you have a choice to pick from a variety of city councils, and that's what I'm looking forward to, having a mixed city council of what Flint really looks like.
Well, thank you very much, I think that's a very good point, and anybody who wants to contact you, she's already given the number, and also posting that on YouTube, so people can just have it there, too, as well. But thanks again, it was a pleasure talking to you.
Thank you, thank you.